Yes, hello, are we having our board meeting now? This is Commissioner Dickerson.
I believe we're having technical difficulties.
Yeah, I can't.
One second.
I can't get my video to work, so, okay, thank you, and I need to drop off around a quarter of two.
Okay, I'll let them know.
Good afternoon, my name is Ray Skinner, I'm chairman of the DCHA stabilization and reform. And I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a regular monthly meeting of the District of Columbia Housing Authority. Being held today, December 11th, 2024. This meeting is being held via webex video conferencing. And the board is here in person, the time is 11, I'm sorry, the time is 1:12 PM. And I want to first of all apologize for being late. My understanding is that there, we are having some difficulty, not we, not DCHA, but I guess many of the social media platforms are having difficulty and technical difficulties. And unfortunately, we're not able to live stream the our Facebook page today because of that. So again, I want to apologize again, it's not a DCHA issue, it is a problem with the streaming platforms. Today's meeting is our, well, first of all, let me ask for a moment of silence to allow for personal reflection. Thank you, I'm being told that you are able to at least look at the meeting on our website, the DCHA website, which is D C. D C houses.org. Today's meeting is our regular monthly meeting, and the Board of Commissioners welcomes constituent input on matters of concern. And offers you today an opportunity to express your views during the public testimony portion of this meeting. However, we require that members of the public who attend our meetings abide by certain rules of decorum to allow the board to complete the business before it today. For this virtual meeting, DCHA asks that you remain muted until you are instructed to speak. Members of the public cannot engage in any disruptive conduct or loud, threatening, or abusive language during our board meetings. This includes any loud outbursts or shouting during times when you have not been invited to speak. Anyone who violates these rules will be removed from the virtual meeting immediately. Serious or repeated violations of the rules may result in your being barred from speaking at future meetings. We appreciate your interest in the business before us today, and thank you in advance for abiding by these rules of conduct. At this time, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote to determine if we have a quorum.
Thank you, Denise Blackson?
Present.
Rosa Burbidge? Lee Roy Clay?
Present.
Jim Dickerson?
Present.
Thank you, Ronnie Harris?
Present.
Thank you, Katrina Jones? Thank you. Alyssa Lee? Chris Murphy?
Present.
Jennifer Reed? Teresa Sella?
Present.
I'm gonna go back, Rosa Burbidge?
Present.
Thank you, and Jennifer Reed? And Chairman Rainniss Skinner?
Here.
We have a call.
Okay, thank you, but this time I would like the commissioners to consider the minutes of the November 13th, 2024 board meeting. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? If none, can I hear, can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And either the minutes are approved as presented. Okay, next, we're gonna have our executive director report, our executive director, Keith Pettigrew, is under the weather today. So I'm gonna ask our deputy executive director, Nicole Wickliffe, to do the presentation. And I don't know if Director Pettigrew is on at all today. I talked to him earlier, he sounded terrible, so he's probably, he's probably not resting. Nicole.
Thank you, Nicole Wickliffe, Deputy Executive Director. For the executive summary, I'll start with the property management operations division. The team has been working hard to contact our over 2,500 waitlist applicants. Just to understand exactly where in the city and their needs, ensuring that they're still interested. So, in doing that, that should help us to fill some of the units, move them in quicker, and match them to the units more timely. We do have making offers, and some people are declining because it's not in the right part of the city, so we're just trying to move that. So, over in November, we had 35 new move-ins, which brought our occupancy to 84.70. So it's slightly raising each month, which is great. Our construction team accepted 70 units, make-ready units, and for accepted, meaning they went in, they walked in. Some they have been rejected, so these are actual ones that we accepted from our contractors that are now ready to be moved in. That was for the month of November. For our housing choice voucher.
Before you go on, Nicole, so given what you just said, what's your sense at this point of when we might be able to open the waitlist?
So that's a great question, we've been talking about this on the public housing side. We know that we'll probably be opening that waitlist second or third quarter, if not sooner.
Of 2025.
Yes, yes. So next, on January's meeting, I'm sorry, February's meeting, we'll see from the reports from January. That these numbers from the waitlist easily can decline either from move-ins or people telling us that they're no longer interested. We found out in contacting some, this some came up on the housing choice voucher list, and they took the vouchers, or they're gonna be often moving from the public housing waitlist. So, so that's the reason why the team are going and making all those calls on our.
Before you, can I just, I wanna, I think we had, we've had a moment that I don't want to let us not call out, a really positive moment. I think this is the first board meeting that we have been board members where the number of vacant units has dropped. Meaning you are bringing units that were previously offline online, and that, you know, and I've always been, you know, I want to be honest, I've been a little bit like, why does that number keep dropping or arising? And I just wanna tell you how gratifying it is to finally have that number dropping. And I know that the Capital Projects team has been doing a great job, and Jackie's been doing a great job, and I'm excited for that number to keep dropping, so just want to celebrate that.
Amen.
Yes, so for our housing choice voucher department, again, they oversee our federal and local, so there's a lot of moving parts. Within the departments and a lot of subsets of different types of vouchers. So the team received a lot of foot traffic at the 702 office. So Director Pettigrew talked about this last month, but they've implemented a day to where the staff can process paperwork, get recertifications done, do initial eligibility. Be able to handle phone calls, emails. So that day of less foot traffic allows them just to process paperwork and try to move items quicker on that day. Is it the same, the same day each week, or does it rotate? Right, Wednesdays, it's Wednesday of every week that that happens. And then in addition, staff have their remote day, and on the remote day, that's also to phone calls, emails, and also process paperwork if needed.
So one, one day a week is remote?
One day a week is remote, and then one, that one day they're in the office actually processing paperwork. The utilization on our vouchers on the federal side is at 87%, so again, that is increasing. There was 105 new admissions for the month of November, which is great. So the team continues to work on the many different programs. And that's all I have for the voucher program side. Oh, and I will add that they continue each month to do the meet and lease. So these events are held twice a month, and it allows landlords to be matched with applicants, applicants to be matched with landlords, so two-way street.
Is that done at 702?
That is at Frederick Douglass.
No, it's been at Ebony, Ebony's Baptist, not Baptist, I'm sorry. We have a church we partner with, and it's hell, they're, they have a huge auditorium, it's up in the street.
So you'll maybe be the church one.
Yeah, church.
Great, and again, you're, they're welcome to come into the office to ask if they need to be, get lists, because we have locators on board now that are reaching out to different landlords. We have landlord liaison that are keeping lists too, and to understand which apartment complex or which owners, individual owners, have available vacant units. So that resource also is there to our families. For the resident services side, our team, I was happy to attend last week luncheon for our ATP graduates. We had about 22 graduates, they all graduated last Friday, Director Pettigrew attended the graduation, I got to attend the luncheon. Actually, I was able to attend both, but I was only, I was, I was booked for the graduation, so, so it was great. I mean, just to see the individuals in there, excited about making it through that program, passing the test through the UDC program. It was, it was just a great atmosphere, they were excited, so glad for all those graduates that graduated the ATP program. The next cohort should be starting soon, so Brian Harris, our department, Director of the Resident Services side, will, will start to receive those applications if they're not already coming in. Any questions?
Actually, I had a voucher question.
Sure.
And it's sort of a technical question, I think, and Anton, maybe this is a question, I think it probably is a question for you. I noticed that, that in the federal eligibility box, the number of applicants who have either denied, withdrawn, or determined ineligible. In October, it was 78, and then in November, it jumped all the way to 261. Just sort of curious to know if you had thought why that was? Maybe if it was FRSP, folks that maybe ended up not working out or something.
So let me make sure, you're talking, the federal ECVP vouchers?
I am on, I'm in the monthly report to the board, in the one-pager on the housing choice voucher program. So in the board book, I think it's page 136.
In which section?
This is federal eligibility, I'm looking from the bottom.
As box from the.
Yeah, I'm just kind of curious to know why that number jumped so much, I'm sure there's a good explanation, I'm just curious to know what it is.
Yeah, so my numbers, so basically, we're looking at is both waitlist withdrawals and folks who are just not being deemed eligible. So we do review though that each month, and the number will primarily change, more than likely it'll be decreased significantly for the next one report, but we're still reviewing that.
It's not necessarily a bad thing, I mean, there could be a reason for it, that it's not a bad thing, I'm not suggesting it is, you know.
And we can get back, but I heard one of your questions, and on our FRSP side, that it's not a, that number's not high because of that only, because we get many denials on that. So we'll be strictly off of our federal vouchers, then now going through each of the vouchers and then just probably deeming some for either not responding or being over income, so.
Yeah, and it, it could be that you're just picking up the pace, I mean, that's, and yeah, so that, that could, in which case, you know, that's good news that we're moving faster. So if you do end up figuring out what it is, let me know.
I'll follow up.
Thank you, great. All right, so on, we have two RAD conversions that's gonna be happening over the next month or two. Which we'll talk about here, but we're very excited to see these two conversions happening at our, two of our projects coming up soon. I'm also on the procurement side, I just wanted to add that all of our procurements are on the Bonfire website. So it's DCHousing.Bonfire.Hub.com. So we also advertise on our website as well, but we've been utilizing the software like other housing authorities on Bonfire, so.
Bonfire is.
It's a platform, it's a platform that many housing authorities and government entities and others use to put their advertisements. So you can go, you can sign up for DC Housing, and when stuff comes out, it automatically just emails individual. So we, you upload your documents there, so it's all in one place, and the team has, has been able to manage that much more efficiently being on the Bonfire.
This is for all types of procurements?
Any procurements that, you know, are advertised, any procurement that are advertised are on our Bonfire website.
It's potentially a way to sort of spread the information, to get, get the information out to more people, right? So I'll open it up, see all the questions.
Yes, Nicole, I, could you have somebody on your staff to give me a call? I need, trying to deal with a problem, I need to have a little help from your office with a resident that's have prob, that has problems. So could you have somebody call me, or could you return my call?
I sure will.
Thank you.
Right after. All right.
Are you finished?
Yes.
Okay, a couple things, we had a major event last week, or this week.
That's so. Yes, yes, my apology.
Unfortunately, I missed, I was out of town, can you talk, I saw pictures with Executive Director Pettigrew, I didn't, I didn't see you.
This was a few weeks ago. Okay, a few weeks ago, yes, right before Thanksgiving, so the Berry Farms groundbreaking, actually, we all were there, I was sitting in the front, front row, the director definitely talked. Was that, for him to come back and to be there knowing that at a young age, you know, him and his family lived there as well. So that was a great, Mayor spoke, our team spoke, so kudos to, to your team. And, and the POA team and our development team on the Berry Farms groundbreaking and opening of the Asbury.
So myself, and I hopefully I speak for the board, I just want to congratulate the team, you know, Berry Farms has been talked about for 20 years or more. So we're just really, really glad to see that that has finally happened, and really cutting for one, and then groundbreaking for the second building. And hopefully, we can expedite that construction.
I mean, they were out there already working, and you could see, just being there, you could really see the vision of all the phases, so it was, it was really nice. And one other thing I did forget, for our residents, the gift of love is gonna be happening on December 19th, so that's when our children and families come together, our theme is Marvell this year. So the team will be here enough to have our residents and the children come out on December 19th for our gift of love.
So one other question, I know the team has been meeting with HUD regularly, trying to close out all of the findings, and I think we've been meeting, I think, weekly with HUD, so what's the status?
So our goal, we have, outside of just the HUD find, we meet, meet with HUD, like you said, on a weekly basis. So our goal is first quarter of 2025 to try to close everything out. Again, once we submit to HUD, that timeframe of them giving us the letters to actually close out, can easily go past that, but our goal is to submit. So we've already been submitting some items, talked to HUD the other day, looking good to at least close out two. And we'll continue to, to have everything submitted by first quarter.
What about the, I guess the two things have been hanging out there, the ACOP and the admin plan?
And that's the reason why I got 2025.
That's why you're saying first quarter.
Saying when they get back to us, so I don't know, Amy, if you want anything to add about that, but that's really the biggest lingering two items. I mean, you've got two 400-page document that everybody has to try to get through and figure out.
No, I mean, just, and I think we've talked about this at prior board meetings, but you know, the goal is to, you know, number one, have a board education session in January to, to, you know, talk about the ACOP and admin plan. And sort of do some, like a bunch of education around that, around some of the, you know, the key, the key pieces of those documents. We want to do that before, and you know, before the board is asked to vote on any kind of updated document, right? And then the goal is to bring them to the board, fingers crossed for the February meeting, in order to, you know, hopefully approve, you know, the, the updated, the, the updated ACOP. And obviously, we will also submit it to HUD along with, you know, additional information for them about how their comments have been, have been addressed over time. So we're hopeful first quarter 2025.
Okay, great, great, sounds good. Any questions from the board members, anyone who I can't see on the screen, but no questions? No?
Actually, can I just, I will run the compliment mode, I just, I just want to appreciate Capital Projects, the, the rate of expenditure of our capital funds is really impressive. And I, I think there's, I think most other DC agencies who have capital funds would be hard pressed to match our numbers in terms of getting those funds obligated and then spent. So I was really delighted to see that number. And the other thing is, and I know that we've heard some concerns from residents who are on Greenleaf at safe, around safety, and I saw the note in the book about building a sub, a DCHA substation, police substation. And really good to see us hearing our residents and finding ways to respond, so lots, lots of good news.
We appreciate that, and the staff definitely will appreciate, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Nicole, great job.
Thank you.
It's shedding, it's shedding for. Okay.
See, but I didn't have his voice, you know, he likes to, likes to change voices and mimic us, so I can. Right.
Next on the agenda is an opportunity for a public testimony, both residents and non-residents, we're gonna take residents first, and then non-residents. Each person can testify for up to three minutes, commenting on any of the resolutions that were sent out, or any other general concerns you have. Comments you have about the housing authority. So again, we're gonna start with residents first. And I actually needed to call.
Sure, not a problem, the first resident we had is Davida Akerson. Davida Akerson, and it's star six to unmute.
Now move forward, next we have Tiffany McPherson. Tiffany McPherson. Okay, I'll move forward. Next we have former Commissioner Kenneth Council.
Good afternoon, commissioners.
Good afternoon.
I'm not coming with difference today, I want to come with a solution. While we're focusing on praising those who are attempting to distract us with the block parties, serious issues remain with DCHA. The solution is just simple, all of these that are being, that's not being in compliance with DC and federal law will be held accountable, no one is above the law. Parties, they need to be accountable, which they are not. Second, I would like to thank Commissioner Seah, Commissioner Blackston, and Commissioner Jones. They see it, they get it, and I like that they've taken the care. They see it, they get it, and I like that they've taken the courage to say the problems need to be resolved and solved, which they're not. Happy holidays.
Thank you, former Commissioner Council.
Next we have Linda Brown. Linda Brown. Next we have Donna Towns. And as a reminder, star six to unmute yourself, Donna Towns. Moving forward. Next we have Patricia Bishop.
Everyone.
Good afternoon.
On the issue of 2457, Upper Cape Senior with RAD, was it, did House repurchase that back from the developers? And y'all want to do RAD at that property?
Do own it. Yeah, we do own the property, right? And, and yes, the, I mean, the resolution pertains to, to converting it from, from public housing to RAD.
Okay. And how many units will y'all convert to RAD?
Units, 164.
Out of how many?
Entire projects is ACC.
Entire. Okay. And will that RAD be utilities still included for those under the zero to 30% income? I'm trying to just make sure that nobody living there or any other property because of can't afford to pay a utility become homeless.
There's, there's no change. So.
There's no change. Okay. Thank you. And I approve that. Okay. And the 30, zero to 30% AMI debt on 2453, that's the words that I was looking for, zero to 30. And I'm glad that people are listening because you are here to serve the most vulnerable of DC. And I see that y'all are doing all you can do to see that that is what y'all ask for in these processes. So thank you very much on that. Now, as far as Greenleaf, I heard something said about security. It's three Greenleaf properties. So where are y'all talking about putting a substation at?
The substation is with the townhomes. I apologize, I don't have the street name, but on the townhome side near the resident council on that opposite end or in that area is the substation.
Jackie.
Jackie is on.
1219, 1219 Delaware Avenue.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Okay, thank you. And Nicole, I'm sorry, this is Deputy Director Nicole and Director Pedigree. Me, Walker, and, you know, we on those first name terms. I'll try to stay mobile. And Director Pedigree, we would like to meet with y'all once again and see what we can do as the new year perceives for all Greenleaf property.
Sounds good. I hope Carla schedules something.
Okay. Thank you. And once again, happy holidays.
Same to you. Thank you, Ms. Bishop.
Next we have Paulette Matthews.
Hello, how you doing? Hello, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, hi, Ms. Matthews.
First, okay, first I'd like to start off by saying happy holidays to everybody. And then I would like to just stroll on to say to the director and his staff, thanks for all y'all do. I've noticed a lot of changes and I'm quite sure everybody should be feeling it. And if not, they soon will feel and see the same thing that I'm seeing here. I would like to see whether or not a report, every, like the monthly call that we have, that the chief or someone on his staff be able to do a, a report of everything that's going on in the property, different properties, so we could just be aware of, and maybe we could find better solutions to solve a lot of the problems that are being had or might come. We'll be a couple of steps ahead of it. I just think that that would be nice to do. I'm also thinking, just like y'all have the monthly meeting for this and for to have the resolutions done, that just maybe y'all can consider having a, a monthly meeting, a second one, that would include voices of the residents to hear what we have to say and try to figure out some things in 2025 to make things a little better. Because as we sit here and have these meetings, a lot of times we still, as residents, don't have that time to say all the things that we need or want to say. And then a lot of times it's, it's pushed off or not said. If, if that's how I feel sometimes. If I'm making a statement and I'm making a statement sometimes, but I'm also asking questions. And people do ask questions and then they'll be referred to, to somebody, oh, well, we'll have somebody to call you or somebody reach out to you, da, da, da. But there might be 50 or 60 other people who have that same problem. And, and it's not that's that one problem getting fixed. Now you have resolved 60 people's problems because they have pretty much the same problem, just to give it some thought. So that's where I'm at right now with those things. And yes, all of my statements this time around.
Okay.
Am I done?
I just want to, I just want to. No, I just wanted to respond.
You can respond after my time, please. And thank you, because I only have limited. And my thought process, I bounce off the wall like a ping pong ball. I'm just talking about me. So I need to, I need to keep it flowing, please. And thank you. No disrespect intended. And the other, the last thing, the last thing is far west as coming together in the rooms again. When are we going to do that? What, what, what are we waiting for? I don't never zoom. I might have zoomed once. I, I've done it before. But my thing is, I think we should get back to the rooms. We're getting too comfortable with this. And I could see all y'all faces if I was to zoom it, but I don't know what none of y'all look like to be truthful. And so hopefully while y'all sitting out here trying to figure out all the rest of it, and you're doing such a good job, let's try to figure that part out too for us.
Okay.
Okay, please. And thank you. And again, everybody enjoy your holiday.
Okay, thank, thank you, Ms. Matthews. Can I, can I respond now?
You sure can. It's your time. Just don't take up my time. We live because we got a little bit of time. Oh, no, I'm not finished.
Okay. So first of all, as, as I've said in, in past meetings in terms of, of having board meetings out in, in different places, it's just a matter, again, of, of the logistics and being able to set up the technology that we have here in the building so we, so that we can do the live streaming and people can come on. So having said that, what I will say is remember in 2023, I think it was, we had a series of listening sessions where we went out to the developments in different wards and had face-to-face meetings with the residents. So I would say that in 2025, we can set up something similar to that where we can come out as a board and meet with the residents. How does that sound? She's not responding. Okay. I guess it's good. Okay.
Star six, I'm sorry. I was put on mute. That's why I didn't respond. So I had to start sick. Come on, y'all. Let's work together. So y'all know they be cutting us off. So I said, but you didn't hear me. I said, thank you very much and thank you, Jesus. That's what I said.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Have a good holiday.
Cut me off. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to go back to, I believe we have Tiffany McPherson on the line. Tiffany McPherson, it is star six to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
We can. You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm calling, my name is Tiffany McPherson. I'm a resident at Bennetthurst. And today I was, I would like to share the events that's taking place with my living situation. On March, March 30th, 2023, I went to the rental office to complete my voice certification paper. As I turned my paperwork in, the resident manager, Ms. Wosse, walked out of her office. Sam, Ms. Brown was coming for me in front of a room full of people. I asked her, what did that mean? And she said she was coming for my three bedroom townhouse. I was, I asked further why, and she didn't give me any information on that. So fast forward to July 31st, I received a letter and I called the rental officer, why about the letter meaning? That I was told that I would transfer to a two bedroom unit because I have two male children who could share a room. I asked to request a change or why was I being transferred when my kids are 14 and 25? My rent is based upon the income of myself and my middle son who is 25. And I didn't think that, I didn't feel like it was fair for him to be sharing a room if he helping me pay, no, if rent is going according to both of our incomes. She told me to call Ms. Brown for clarity on the situation. Ms. Brown stated that they were the same gender, male, and they could share a bedroom. I was sent, I was sent to a document that I found on dc housing.org's website that says that two minors of the same gender should be allocated one bedroom. However, no individual 13 years old or older should share a bedroom with a member within five years or more of their age difference. She told me that she had seven people in the two bedroom and I asked her, what did they have to do with my family being moved? And that means that I have to move to go to a two bedroom. So she told me to go to the property, go to the rental office, so I could see the property and sign the paperwork to move. So I asked if I could get it in writing and I still haven't gotten it in writing yet. I was asked, why was I being downsized? When I was moved, I never asked to be assigned to this three bedroom. I've been, I was assigned to this three bedroom in 2013 and now I'm being asked to move into a two bedroom with myself, my 14 year old and my 25 year old. So I'm just asking, why do I have to be moved? And can I please, even if it's a reload, I mean, if it's a, they're supposed to be renovating a property, why can't they renovate this property and move me just into a three bedroom? Even if it's an apartment and take me out of a two bedroom, a townhouse, why would they put me into a two bedroom with a 14 year old and a 25 year sharing a room?
Okay, thank you, Ms. McPherson. So we'll, we'll have one of the staff follow up with you. I mean, you know, we can't resolve it here today, but somebody from the staff will call you and hopefully can work out the situation for you.
Thank you so much.
Next, I'm going to go back to Donna Towns. Donna Towns, star six to unmute.
Hello?
Yes, Ms. Towns, yes.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Donna Towns and I'm a Park Morton resident. And I've gone through a lot since 2018, 2018 to 2024. And some things have been resolved, such as recertification and the non-backdated rent charges. Now I need to stay focused on the unlawful eviction of apartment of 620, apartment 21. You know, in May 2019, this was the first phase of the lead abatement. And my property was supposed to be moved to the center of the room. But the day before, Ms. Diallo asked me to come and sign a lease and my property would be going upstairs to apartment 33. That didn't happen. What happened was my apartment was abated. And abatement is the ending, the reduction and the lessening of my property. DCHA took possession of all of my property. Only thing that came upstairs was dresser frames with no drawers. I lost all the contents of my drawers, photographs, jewelry, electronics, computers, vintage furniture, I just everything. And I believe this, the housing managers should be held accountable for their actions. And their actions of Ms. Betty Diallo is she didn't follow any laws. And as a housing manager, you're supposed to be responsible for making emergency repairs. I lived in apartment 21 from August, September until May, 2018 till May 2019. I, I lost the use of my bathroom. I couldn't use my kitchen. I've had plaster and everything falling off the walls. So when she called me, called me at 6:30 the day, on May 30th, to ask me to change my lease to sign for upstairs, she promised me my property was going to go upstairs, but instead it was converted to DCHA. It was a self-help and with, on, under Ms. Diallo's authority. And I'm tired. I've been carrying this weight for so long. It's messing with my mental as well as my physical health. Because in 2019, I was in an injury and I looked and I broke some organ, some, some limbs and stuff. Now I have to, I go to therapy and everything to try to strengthen my legs and I still have to go upstairs all the way up to the third floor to a place with no furniture, just, just looking at walls. Or there's furniture that's useless, nothing. So I just would like DCHA, DCHA to recognize all of that I've gone through and also recognize that Mr. Diallo avoided, ignored section B 1800, that's applicant and employee obligations. She didn't do any repairs. She didn't do no recertifications, or she did do one. But I've tried for two times to do my recertification. She didn't do no inspections. She did nothing. And when I came up here, I just got inspections and repairs done a few months ago from the whole time that I've been up here. So I'm very disappointed and I'm looking for closure to this, these issues in which I'm thinking about.
Thank you, Ms. Towns. We will definitely follow up. I know the staff has been talking with you and we will continue to talk with you to try to resolve your situation. Thank you.
Next we have Cynthia Wilson. Cynthia Wilson. Moving forward. Next we have William Jordan.
Hi, Mr. Jordan.
Hello. Good afternoon. It's good to see you all today. And I don't like that I have to be the screw, but I guess that's my job. So I want to come back to, as you know, I've been active with the Park Morton Equity Team. And my concern has always been with a tendency for the development team, this board and the agency to lower the standard of what NCI promised the residents. So I just wanted to take some time today to read, to remind you that it's not just about throwing and warehousing people in units. That was not the commitment. The commitment was deeper than that. And so from the enabling legislation, particularly for Park Morton, it says the neighborhood was selected as a new community in order to bring the benefits and opportunities provided by this initiative to preserve and expand its affordable housing stock. That's one thing. Improve economic integration into the larger Parkview, Pettworth community. Economic integration. That means do better, more money expansion, that the structure of income, new communities will help people do better economically, not just be warehouse in an affordable unit. It says enhance resident opportunities through better job placement. That means infrastructurally that that's the case, not have a couple of job fairs and hope that things happen. There's a commitment to make it happen, a structure to make it happen, right? Have structured programs, reduce crime, poverty, reduce poverty, not just warehouse people in poverty, reduce poverty through targeted strategies. That means specific to Park Morton communities, not just general things. Establish and reinvest the community services, amenities and engage residents. Establish and reinvest the community services, amenities, and engage residents in decision-making. Not engage in after we make a decision, in decision-making. In order for that to happen, you have to have a working, um, resident council, fully staffed, fully funded and operational. So it is dishonest to claim victory when one of the key elements is not done. And then finally, I'm gonna go back to resolution twenty-two nineteen. And there were elements we put in to move the project forward. And it says, D C H A agrees to establish a plan to explore and implement technical assistance structures for Park Morton residents, section three businesses, resident management corporation structures. All these things talk about fundamental structures in order to execute. And we have not done those to any strong level to be able to make that difference, right? And if you read the resolution, it goes on and say very specifically the things we need to do in order to make this happen. It always talks about partnerships between residents and the agency. So we're not just sitting back and waiting for the agency, but to move forward aggressively. And it hasn't happened at the level that was promised. And then finally, I wanna say that I wanna challenge the chair in that if the, the board cannot just say, hey, we selected a dynamite director, and we're just gonna kinda sit back and do the policy stuff, that is not the purpose of the Starboard. Uh, the Starboard is to have a more aggressive role into assuring these things. And if the director says it takes them three years to get the agency up and running, then obviously you cannot have a, a viewpoint where you pretend that it's up, and so you can step back. You have to remain highly engaged, have to bring those things to the table. And so, you know, as I say, ho, 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 and Merry Christmas. In twenty twenty-five, we gotta put the structures in place for resident empowerment, or we just gonna fight about it? And we just, but you can't do it passively, it just can't work. So thank you for your time, enjoy your holiday.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. And twenty, in twenty twenty-five, hopefully we will, we will do better in terms of communicating with you and, you know, living up to the commitment that we made for the N C I program, not only at Park Morton, but for the other N C I projects. Thank you.
Next, we have Daniel Del Piaglago.
Good afternoon. Um, my name is Daniel Del Piaglago, and I work with Empower D C. As we close up the year, there's a couple of reflections and questions I have for this board and the agency in general. This new administration, which is actually not that new anymore, has brought some change to this ailing agency. Tenants report, uh, more accessibility to the director and some hope that much-needed change will occur. While this is welcome, let's not let this undermine the serious issues that still ail the agency. We've heard some of these very same issues today from tenants, condition issues, unresponsive, unprofessional staff, unclear and ineffective policies that hurt residents, stalled, slow-moving developments, and a high percentage of vacant units are still issues that tenants deal with. At the recent oversight hearing by the council member, Robert White, Director Pedigree said that the agency is still waiting for approval from HUD on the section eighteen applications that were submitted in July to begin, um, engaging residents on what will happen uh, at the properties. Please know that for years now, grandiose redevelopment plans have been introduced with very little in the way of delivery. These grandiose plans and announcements create a host of questions for public housing residents, usually with little in the way of answers with further, which further create confusion and instability for residents. In relation to these section eighteen applications, residents want to make sure they have an actionable right of return if there is any relocation planned, as well as legally binding agreements on how they will be involved and help shape what happens on their properties. We understand that there is some language related to this, to this in the recently approved handbook, but it is not a legally binding document, uh, which is what residents really want and need to ensure that this is not a repeat of what has transpired, uh, at the agency for many years. In closing, we, please know that my organization and the larger advocacy, advocacy community want to help improve this agency. We don't want to have an adversarial relationship, but one that helps to keep everyone accountable so the material conditions people are living in and their quality of life improves. We'll continue to advocate for local funding for public housing repairs, to make sure that this agency can move forward and really, um, improve the lives of its residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, we have Rachel Drezen.
Hello. Oh. Sorry, technical difficulties. Let me see if I can get this on. There we go. Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Rachel Drezen, and I am a law student attorney with Georgetown University's Medical Legal Partnership, the Health Justice Alliance, which serves low-income residents in wards seven and eight. Our legal clients, many of whom are Housing Choice voucher participants, are referred to us by Georgetown Community Pediatrics due to health-harming legal needs. Our Housing Choice voucher program participant clients consistently struggle to get in contact with D C H A representatives and navigate the agency's systems. D C H A describes its mission as one that, quote, "provides quality, affordable housing to low-income households, fosters sustainable communities, and cultivates opportunities for residents to improve their lives," end quote. However, complex, confusing, and inaccessible administrative systems in fact block access to healthy housing and impose psychological costs of stress and stigma on Housing Choice voucher program participants. I would like to thank my client, Ms. H, for trusting me to tell her story today. Ms. H has been a Housing Choice voucher holder for over fifteen years, but in the last four has received little to no communication from D C H A. Without any housing quality inspections, health-harming, the, uh, health-harming housing code violations have accumulated in her home, which her landlord did nothing to address. Additionally, she received no notice when D C H A incorrectly raised her rent, preventing her from addressing the agency's mistake and leading to unlawful threats of eviction from her landlord. H J A assisted Ms. H with obtaining housing quality standards inspection, rent redetermination, and transfer voucher. However, even beginning each of these processes required dozens of emails and phone calls from D C, from H J A to D C H A. Our emails often went unanswered and had to be escalated to upper management for any action. These delays on simple administrative matters have prolonged Ms. H and her son's exposure to health-harming housing code violations. And despite numerous emails, to date, she has still not received her new, uh, utility card, uh, in the mail. Ms. Hill is not the only H J A client to deal with extreme administrative burden when interacting with D C H A. H J A has had to send dozens of emails and escalate requests up to, up the D C H A chain of command to assist Housing Choice voucher program clients with issues such as securing housing quality inspections, receiving approval for new units, and even obtaining transfer vouchers to escape domestic violence. Importantly, H J A's clients navigate the situation with free legal assistance, but most voucher holders navigate the system without help, placing these participants under even more direct stress and compounding the threat to their health and well-being. There are several reforms that could be extremely impactful in helping the current system run smoothly. First of all, personnel and particularly housing specialists should be required to answer their phones consistently during the workday, empty their voicemail boxes daily, and respond to phone calls and emails within twenty-four to forty-eight hours. Secondly, the Housing Choice voucher program would benefit from knowledgeable and accessible fix-it personnel to quickly resolve issues before they turn into crises. Uh, positions like those filled by Patuny Cooper in D C H A's Audit and Compliance Office and LaShonda Perry in Public Housing. Section eight director Anton Shaw has been very helpful. However, he cannot possibly respond to every Housing Choice voucher program participant's needs alone. Expanding his office and their, his support, and therefore his office's ability to facilitate oversight and regulation of stalled communications would be very helpful as well. These are suggestions of ways to begin lifting the administrative burden of interactions with D C H A. The agency should pursue input from voucher holders and advocates to identify problem points in the system and design more functional and effective communication systems. If D C H A's purpose is to provide quality housing and foster communities, then it must ensure that interactions with the agency support rather than harm clients' health. Thank you for your time and happy holidays.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Drezen. Um, thank you for bringing some of those issues to our attention. Uh, and I can assure you that we are continually, uh, working to improve our processes internally, our processes of communication. And, uh, also, I know that there is in fact expansion underway within the office for the housing, uh, the Housing Choice voucher program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Tawana Sellers. Tawana Sellers, star six, unmute. Chairman, that concludes the testimony.
Okay, thank, uh, thank you for all of you who, um, came forward today to present testimony to the board. We do, uh, take, uh, the testimony we receive from residents and the public at large very seriously. And when I've said that we will follow up on certain issues, uh, that is absolutely true, we will follow up. Thank you. Okay, next, we're gonna move on to, um, committee reports. And I'm gonna start with, um, Commissioner Jones and the Administration and Operations Committee.
I'm gonna double between. So I, at our last, um, committee meeting, we did discuss, uh, this resolution.
It's resolution twenty, resolution twenty-four dash fifty-three.
Yes, twenty-four fifty-three. And Hammera is going to speak to it. And resolution twenty-four fifty-three is to authorize the submission to the Council of the District of Columbia of an agreement to enter into a long-term subsidy contract for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two for local rent supplement program awarded projects to support the creation of affordable housing in the District of Columbia.
That's the title.
Yeah, we, we, we had a whole talk, a discussion about that during the meeting to, um, kinda get that, that subject a little more concise so that people would know right off.
What it is.
What it is. But I'll let Hammera.
I still don't know. Hammer, would you introduce yourself, please?
Yes, good afternoon, everybody. Hammera Gabrias, I am currently serving as the Director of External Affairs. Um, but I am here to speak to this resolution, uh, which is a, uh, it's part of the process that we go through to, uh, to move forward with a new L R S P, so Local Rent Supplement Program, project-based, uh, contract. We require authorization from the board to then submit the contracts to the council for approval before the, uh, project can move forward. Um, just as a bit of background, these are, this is a partnership that we have with the Department of Housing and Community Development to, uh, create or preserve additional affordable housing for. And so the L R S P operating subsidy is, is there to support that, uh, the project.
So what is the project and how was it selected?
So the selection is done through, uh, we partner with the Department of Housing and Community Development. They're the, um, they issued the solicitation and projects submit their, um, submit their projects. They go through an initial underwriting, um, with, with D H C D. Once they've met initial threshold is how we are able to, then they will send us the information about how many units are proposed to go to, uh, L R S P for project-based. Um, and then, and, and then we, you know, we do our administration, which is, uh, confirming rent reasonableness and doing the voucher administration. So we determine eligibility for the households that are moving in, um, and, and continue to administer the project.
So again, what, what is, what?
My screen, and I'm sorry, I was hoping my screen would have refreshed by now. Um, it has now frozen, so the project name, yeah.
Yeah, the project name, right?
Yes, so the project name is not coming up. My, uh, sorry, I think. My apologies, it's not, um, my, my screen is frozen, so I can't see the name of the, it's on the, there, there's a chart at the bottom.
Harvard Court. So Harvard Court, Harvard Court, does that ring a bell?
Yes.
Okay. So, so just so we're clear, the contract is between D C H A and?
But yes, the operating subsidy contract is between D C H A and the project. Uh, there's a.
Not D H C D, how, how does D H C D fit into it?
So D H C D, because when they apply for the, for the funding, they actually apply for capital as well as, as well as the operating subsidy. So there's capital funding that the project will receive from D H C D. When, and so, and D H C D, we have an M O U with D H C D where for the, um, for the first, for the stabilization years, which is the very first year that the units come online and the full fiscal year thereafter, we would actually draw down the money from D H C D to, to make those payments. But thereafter, sorry.
But D H C D is not a party to this contract that?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Any questions from the?
You may just ask, Mr. Chairman, is this, I think we've done this sort of thing before. This is not a, of course.
It's not new.
See law, but we, for Project Vetria, we have to do this, yeah.
So we, we, D H C D does this solicitation, they get, uh, proposals from developers, and they select one, two, three. In the past, we've had two, three projects at a time to come through, uh, this, this process. So this time, this time, it's, it's only one. So the other question I had was just in terms of timing, I think it talked about, uh, it says a contract for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. But I think in, in the write-up, it's, I thought it said it's referred to funds from fiscal twenty-one, actually to fiscal twenty-one.
And Hammer, this is the twenty-two, the funding from?
The R F P, so, and, and I think that what it, what it references is that the R F P was issued then. Um, that, right. And so the.
So this, this again is, is another situation that's frustrating for, for us as the board because it just takes so long to, to get these things done. And, you know, they issued the R F P in twenty-twenty-one. Here, we're going into twenty-twenty-five, and we're just, uh, trying to get the project again to provide affordable housing for, for people.
Exactly, and I think this also speaks to some of the, the, uh, kind of challenges and, you know, with the changing of the, of the market, um, that they're trying to move projects forward. And so, yes, Harvard Court Apartments is the, is the, uh, the project. And so, a, and I think that is definitely a dynamic. Uh, but that D H C D is really, you know, working to move as many projects forward as possible. But given the, um, financial, uh, situation, the economy, um, and some of the, the challenges that they're experiencing. So, you know, a, as much as possible, we do try to bring projects on block. Uh, but this was the one that was ready to move forward, and so we didn't wanna hold up the progress.
So there may be some, there may be some others for funding from twenty-one or twenty-two, something like that.
Uh, I'm not sure from twenty-one or twenty-two. I can double check and make sure, uh, we give you an update. But I know that there's a new R F P that has, that has been issued, and so, um, you know, we'll, we'll provide you with an update.
Okay. Uh, any questions from the board? Any other board members online that I can't see? Have your hands raised? No questions? Uh, with that, then I would ask for a, uh, resolution. Uh, that's for motion to approve resolution twenty-four dash fifty-three with the title that Commissioner Jones mentioned earlier.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Sola. Okay. Uh, any other, uh, comments or questions? Uh, hearing done, we'll have a roll call vote on resolution twenty-four dash fifty-three.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes. Thank you.
Commissioner Reed? Commissioner Dickerson? Commissioner Dickerson? Commissioner Blackson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Sella?
Yes.
Thank you. And Chairman Skinner?
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
Okay, any other?
Commissioner Skinner, one thing that we discussed on our meeting is just the process of how these resolutions, not, I'm sorry, not the resolution, but the funding documents for this type of project comes to the board. And we did ask that we find a better way of bringing it up in a timely, in a more accurately described way so that everybody would know exactly what we're talking about in the funding for it. So just wanted to make sure that part was noted.
This, this funding for the LRSP program is, is very, it's, it's, it's very complicated. And I, you know, I, I tried to, to be as diligent as possible in terms of reading everything, but it is very confusing. So we will ask the staffs to actually do, do a better job and do it at, at the committee level before it comes to the full.
Yes.
Somebody said sure. Oh, that's Hammera.
Yes, that was me, sorry. Yes, so we'll, we'll do a, a refresh of the whole framework and then also the, you know, where the projects lie in the, in the process.
In the pipeline.
Right, yeah. That's what I was asking earlier, are there others out there? There probably are, right?
Yeah.
Commissioner Sella?
I think beyond this resolution, I did not have a chance to participate in the December board meeting, but Hamara kindly shared the updates and walked me through the, the PowerPoint presentation, walking through all of the different domains that the committee is involved in, walking through kind of a high-level overview of the main areas of concern, the main projects and, and priorities for each of those domains. And I wanted to, I'm so disappointed that the director isn't here for me to publicly acknowledge that he absolutely heard my concerns from the last meeting. And it, what you produced was exactly what we need and what have been asking for. So I, you know, I will, we will, of course, provide feedback and comments. I talked to Hamara about just giving me like at least two weeks to get you my notes and feedback, but the immediate reaction was that is exactly why we want and need to help us understand and navigate the, the discussion across all of the domains that our committee is responsible for. So I wanted to thank the director and the executive team for that development.
Thank you. Okay, is that?
Yes.
Okay, next, we're going to go to the Committee on Capital Projects, Commissioner Murphy.
Yeah, so thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is asking for the board's support for Resolution twenty-four fifty-four, which is to authorize the RAD conversion of the ACC units at Arthur Capper Senior One. And I say that to remind myself that it's which one is which, because there's Arthur Capper Senior One and there's Arthur Capper Senior Two. This is about Arthur Capper Senior One. This was the, this was a project that had been renovated fairly recently and then had a fire in 2018. And so there was another rehab, and it's in, in very good shape. Yeah.
In construction?
Yeah, exactly. So it's, it is one of the, one of the RAD conversions where we've got a, a very well-maintained property that's in very good shape. This RAD conversion will allow us to increase the operating subsidy, as we've talked about before. And it should be familiar to us because in October of 2023, we authorized the staff to apply to HUD for support for converting it to RAD, which we had subsequently gotten. So this is just really, really the next step in that process where we're actually now today proposing that we give the staff the authority to complete the conversion. So nothing terribly new, nothing terribly controversial. And the last time around, you may remember, we had wanted confirmation that all the correct information sessions were held with residents and, and that was done successfully. And we were told there were really no serious concerns expressed by, by anyone. So we are, we discussed this in our committee and we didn't have any concerns and wanted to bring it forward today.
Any questions? Any of the commissioners online have any questions? Don't see any hands raised. So hearing none, Chair will entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty-four dash fifty-four. Authorized conversion of RAD conversion of apartment apartments.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Sella. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Sella?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Blackson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
And Chairman Skinner?
Yes. Okay, Commissioner Murphy, anything else on the capital projects?
From the committee? Uh, let's see, let me just, I know it's okay. We did, are we going to talk about a capital budget request or?
That was, we had not planned.
Okay, I think everybody knows that that has gone in, something about that. One thing that I did want to just say is we did consider several new market tax credit proposals and not, considers is the wrong word. We got information on them because this is, this is not the DCHA Board's separate entity. And there was supports.
I guess, go ahead, finish.
Well, I should say, there were, there was, the staff has identified a number of projects that will allow us to use up our, our allotment of tax credits that we've been given from the Department of Treasury, which is important to the extent that we want to apply for additional ones. And you'll recall, this program helps generate fees that support the agency's overall effort. I think the staff did a really good job of finding a number of projects after a couple of them had fallen through. So I just want to appreciate the staff on that. I think we also talked about and agreed that we want to do a better job of advertising as we're getting the word out that this program exists and making sure that, that DC entities that have the opportunity to avail themselves of this program, if it's a good fit. Because we want to be clear, it's not always a good fit for a lot of folks. But we wanted to be, we want to do a little bit better job of getting the word out. And there was really no disagreement. It was just a question of how do we do that? So I just want to appreciate the team.
So my question is, are we still talking about the same fifty-five million dollars?
Yes.
Several times that was there? I thought we were done.
Yeah, we did too.
So these are, are new, new additional?
Replacement. Replacement. Replacement.
For the ones that weren't able to go to closing.
Yes. And there will be an opportunity to apply for a new round of new market tax credits next year in January, so.
That's the entity applying for, not, not for outside. We're going to be.
Not January of twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five, yes.
Going to be able to do that? I mean, we have everything in place.
We do now, yes. Subject to approval, of course, for, by the board, for the three transactions, we will.
Okay.
One of the key components was using the, the remaining allocation.
Yeah, that's why.
Deadline for the application, isn't it?
I believe it's January twenty-fifth, I believe.
To, to treasury, to, to make her Nicole's point.
So are we saying we're going to have these projects closed by January?
No, as long as we have them obligated or, you know, yeah.
But it, it certainly enhances, to your point, I think, it enhances our competitiveness when we are fully obligating our tax credits. Yeah, I mean, ideally, yes, yes. Yeah, yeah. But we had, we did have a few projects that we had previously approved that sort of somewhat unexpectedly fall out. I, I don't think some of them were.
I, I didn't get as strong to look at the materials, but, but I will do that.
Yeah, they're good, they're good projects. I think you'll feel good about them. Great. So that was really, that was really the major thing. And then, yeah, I don't think there's anything else we need to cover.
Okay, next, the Committee on Resident Services, Commissioner Blackson?
Hello.
Good. Hey, Commissioner.
Hey, hello, everybody. My name is Commissioner Denise Blackson and I'm the Chair of the Resident Service Committee. As the Chair of the Resident Service Committee, I'm very dedicated to the quality of life for residents. And the main focus right now has been an initiative you may hear me speak about time and time again, which is called Block by Block. And this initiative is designed with the residents in mind to keep them with continuous trainings and education that they can take back to their communities. And recently, many of the leaders who have attended these block-by-block initiatives have shared how phenomenally successful they were and the trainings and information they have taken back to their communities have been greatly received. And just want to say, you know, I'm going to continue to work on that. We actually have an in-person meeting on next week on Thursday and more trainings to come. And if you ever need to reach me, I can be reached at two oh two, two four, two five zero, four four five one. Again, I'm Commissioner Denise Blackson and I'm a resident commissioner. And please feel free to reach out to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Blackson. Then finally, the Committee on Budget and Finance, Commissioner Reed, is she back on? Commissioner Clay, can you talk about your last meeting?
Yep. So first, as Commissioner Murphy talked a lot about for capital projects, we also heard about the new market tax credit projects as well. Additionally, we looked at the budget-to-actual reports. We appreciate the team for kind of changing or giving us a new format for how we look at financial reports. It was very helpful to really kind of track where we are against budget. We, no major issues came out of that review. Also, the, the, we, there's an extension that we received from HUD to submit the FDS reports that's been extended to January thirtieth. And what those are, those are the year-end financial or really kind of unaudited reports that we submit to HUD, which normally would have been due November thirtieth, but we've been extended to January thirtieth. Also, the team is implementing the data rail software, which should greatly help the team to be able to review financial information. They're hoping to have that done by January of 2025. And also, the BDO accountants, they talked a lot about the work that they're doing to help close out FY twenty-four and all the best practices to implement. And, and I think that'll be, that'll be very helpful. Also, they're working with a YARDI consultant who is helping with that implementation as well as scrubbing some of the data. As, as you all know, when we've looked at some of the past reports, we've noticed that some of the data seems to be online, that, you know, maybe they should not have been recorded online. So they're working through, scrubbing through a lot of that information. And I think that's the majority of what we did.
So, so what's your sense of where we are with regard to implementation of the various YARDI modules as it relates to finance? Because I know there, there's other stuff for, for some of the other programs as it relates to finance.
I believe that now the bigger issue, especially when it comes to YARDI, is not just the implementation itself, but it's making sure that the information that's in the system is good information and it's clean. And so I know that a lot of time is being spent on that. I, I don't remember when they said that, I, oh. I don't remember the timeline in terms of when they expected all of that will be, will be clear. But they are working very hard on getting through that information and cleaning that up. And, and they've brought in a consultant, so logistics, who is helping to, to get that worked on. So I know they're working very hard to, to get through that as quickly as possible.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay, any questions for Commissioner Clay? Commissioner Sella, did you?
No.
Okay, anyone commissioners online, any questions? Okay, then that can be, completes all of our committee reports. So next item on the agenda is just commissioners' time. And that's just an opportunity to go around and see what, if anything, is on the minds of our commissioners. So we'll, we'll start with the in-house commissioners and I'm going to go to my right, Commissioner Clay. You don't, you don't have to say it. In the interest of time.
Just something that Commissioner Murphy pointed out that I, I just want to reiterate when we looked at the, and, and I was not in this meeting, but one of the things that he brought up was with, with Arthur Capper. I know that often when we talk about especially RAD conversions, there's this concern that gets raised about whether or not the residents are hearing about it. And so I think it's, it's great to hear that as part of looking at this, that the residents heard about it, that they were aware and didn't have concerns and that we're considering their interests when making these decisions. So that's all to recognize.
Commissioner Sella?
I think I was really happy to hear you bring up the listening sessions from previously. I definitely, it resonates with me that we're not seeing and talking to and touching with our resident members. I really appreciated the summer block parties for that opportunity to like actually directly talk to, see and get familiar with our residents. So I was happy to hear it come back on our agenda and to hear that you were also interested in that chair, a strategy. Yeah. Okay. I would give you flexibility and room, you know? I'm a big fan of those. I know they take up time though, so.
I would just say, I, I, I know we've all, it's been hard for us all to feel patient to see progress and we, it, it is, I'm not a patient person, so it's been really hard that just, you know, there was a period of time where we keep coming in and, and we kept saying, you know, the team was saying, we're doing the work, but, you know, be patient, you'll see the results. And I just want to say, it really starts, it's starting to feel like we're starting to see the sort of the green shoots of spring for this agency where the numbers are just really starting to turn around. We obviously have a long way to go, but it just really feels like we're going in the right direction now. And I just want to appreciate the team for, for helping to get us in this positive direction. So thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
I agree with everything that is in there.
I'm not sure who else is still on.
Commissioner Harris?
I'm still, um, no, I, I, I agree with the consensus of the rest of the commissioners, but I don't have anything to add. Thank you.
Commissioner Blackson, anything else? Still there? Okay, so I will also say that I agree that with everything that's been said. I think it's been a, a really good year for the agency, as has been said. We've come a long way, but we still have a long way to go. But I'm, you know, personally, I'm kind of an eternal, eternal economist. And I always look in the, you know, the glass half-full kind of a person. So I'm, I'm glad to see the, the changes that have been made and that are continuing to be made. And you can convey that to Director Pedigree on behalf, on behalf of the board. And with that, I just want to wish everyone happy holidays, happy new year. And with that, I think I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Before, before adjourning, the, the next Board of Commissioners, we will not have a meeting in January. Therefore, the next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held on Wednesday, February twelfth, twenty twenty-five. At, we're in the twenty twenty-five, at, at one PM via WebEx. Information regarding viewing or participating in the meeting live can be found at our website, And again, I want to apologize for the technical difficulties that we had today at the beginning of the meeting. And with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned at two thirty-four PM.